Mr. Murphy, I was very disappointed when I seen the tape when they wrongfully removed me. You said, "Yes!" And your hands went up. I wasn't excited about losing leadership because I try to help people.
And I don't want this project, I don't want this resolution to fail. And I can count votes too. And my vote is to send it back to committee. So, I'm just asking.
Point of information.
We need to compromise.
What's your point?
Point of information, if they don't get five votes or we don't get five votes to send it back, then they come with a motion to pass it. That's a different vote than sending it back.
That's an improper point of information. Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Um, isn't it Ms. Winfrey Carter? Look, point of order.
What's your point?
Ms. Herkenrother, I'm talking to Ms. Winfrey Carter. We've been talking four years before you got here. Your little caveats and trying to discredit me in the middle of my business politically, I wish you would cut the crap.
Okay, Mr. Mays, that's an improper point of order.
Point of order. You say that's improper? I'll ask for an appeal, but you need to leave me alone. I ain't studying what you're talking about.
Is there an appeal?
Um...
No.
We're in our second round of discussion. Yes, Mr. Mays?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I want to do two things in this second round. One, I've been on this council for nine years. Two, I probably got a better relationship asking Ms. Winfrey Carter a question than you do. Three, I'm tired of you over and over trying to make me look like a fool in front of the public telling me I'm asking improper questions, point of information. It ain't you improper. Number three, Ms. Winfrey Carter, and I believe it and made it clear, this whole thing can be appealed because with Ms. Liddell Lewis, Mr. Murphy, you and Ms. Priestley being stubborn, don't want to listen, you don't even want me to talk to my colleague. I knew her before she was a councilperson. I don't know you. But you keep fooling with me, the public gonna know you because I'm gonna highlight you. I dealt with this with Kate Fields and others. Is it a cultural difference that you think you can make this Northside Brother look ignorant? I'm not. And every meeting repeatedly, you can't discredit me. I'm who I am. You've been here nine months, and I've been sitting here for nine years. I'm asking you to cut the crap out and appeal to you before. It's gonna get a little funky if you keep it up. That's to you to say. But I want y'all to learn something. It took me a while to become a seasoned politician. And Ms. Herkenrother, I don't know who in your area cheering for you, but you're not gonna get your reputation on my back. If somebody telling you to go down, come down here and try to put me in order, I don't know who you're talking to, your block club association, but I got mine too. And they far north on the North End, and they talk about you. Get your knee off my neck.
Okay, well, that motion failed. So that brings us down to resolution...
Point of order.
What's your point?
No, it can be a new motion.
Okay, is there a new motion?
Let me see what my brain say.
Okay, well, the chair will entertain a motion.
Since I'm the oldest senior councilperson, some people, somebody filed a complaint on me telling them about age discrimination because I said they were young. When I say I'm the senior and oldest councilperson, I mean it. And I asked Jan Busman, "Is that age discrimination?" When they talk about, he says he's the senior councilperson. I am. So my point is...
Mr. Murphy?
Um, just briefly, we, as the council, we all need to look in the mirror when we talk about trying to get the meeting moving forward. And before, at our last council meeting, Councilwoman Jerry Winfrey Carter talked about us being able to do our homework before we get to the meeting. Let's look and see who is dominating the meeting when it comes down to speaking while we talking about we want to move the meetings forward. I don't see none, one of my colleagues dominating the meeting besides one particular councilperson.
Point of information.
So when you talk about, I'm done.
What's your point?
If you talking about me, say my name. Would you do that if you talking about me?
Okay, Mr. Murphy, you're finished?
I'm done.
Okay, is there any other discussion in the first round? In the first round? In the second round, is there any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Mr. Mays?
Real quick, Mr. Murphy, I'm a politician. I have no problem with you saying my name. Don't imply, if you think I'm talking, then I'm gonna send you back to school because the clock go off at five minutes with everybody under the council. So, you know, I want you to say my name. My reputation, just like I'm telling Herkenrother, means something. Everybody in the city of Flint pretty much know what I'm in the middle of right now. So you ain't finna screw my political reputation in the middle of a voting cycle. And when you try, you bump your head just like the rest of them. I help you bump it. And I know folk. I know them publicly and privately. And fronting is dangerous. Telling half-truth from the mayor's office is dangerous. A police chief who ain't honest, in my opinion, is dangerous. Hypocrites on council voting for one area town and not another is dangerous. And people are smart. They looking, they talking to me, and they see it. I'll be voting for this change order. Thank you.
Okay, so anyone else would like to speak in the second round?
I done had six, seven people on this council play games like what you and Ms. Herkenrother playing. They gone now. Want me to name them? I spoke on them. I wanted them gone. You keep it up, it won't be no five-year term. You'll be gone. It bail going to council. Okay, now we on the second one that we talked about in that particular matter for 78,000, and we'll see.
No, 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 no.
I don't need you talking when I got the floor, Ms. Herkenrother. This is getting to be a little much, you and Mr. Murphy. You can laugh, and I'm here to take care. Point of order.
What's your point?
When I got the floor, keep your mouth shut, don't you out of order. Now, I'm gonna tell you this. This is my point. You can't just take the floor when I'm talking. So rule whether you can take the floor and laugh and do your remarks when I'm talking. That's my point of order. Can you do it?
Mr. Mays, you are out of order, and I'm issuing...
Point of order.
And I am issuing...
Point of order.
What's your point?
I ask you to rule on my point of order while whether you can take the floor. If you say yes, I'm appealing it. If you say no, then you can't. But you did.
Mr. Mays, as I just stated, you are being ruled out of order, and I'm issuing you your first warning.
I appeal the ruling of the chair.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? The ruling of the chair stands.
So who got the floor now? Me?
Mr. Mays, I keep trying to explain where we're at. You keep interrupting me. What's your point?
You gave me the floor. Just because my colleagues done appealed my second and you laughing, I had the floor. Now my point of order is who got the floor. I want to hear you say my name.
We are on the motion to send Resolution 220273 to council. Mr. Mays currently has the floor.
I had it when my colleagues didn't second my appeal you ruling me out of order. And so I'm gonna use my five minutes to speak on that. We used to say in NAACP, when folks sit there and condone wrongdoing, they just as wrong as the person. Now, I knew a motion was made and seconded, and then you gave me the floor. Next thing I know, I hear your voice, laughing. You out of order. I appealed it, and you ruling me out of order because you interrupted me when I had the floor. I don't even know what you be saying up there. You and Mr. Murphy seem to be ignorant to some rules. Now, I wouldn't care if you ruled...
Point of order.
What's your point?
He's out of order calling us ignorant to the rules. Ignorant is a very derogatory word to use to define a colleague.
Thank you. Colleagues are remembered to treat each other with decorum and respect. Mr. Mays, you've already been issued your first warning.
Did you rule that I was out of order saying y'all ignorant to rules? Your job is to rule on whether or not it's out of order to say you ignorant to rules. That's what he did a point of order on, and you trying to skirt that. So make your ruling, yes or no?
That was a proper point of order?
Okay, I appeal the ruling of the chair.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay, Mr. Mays, you still have the floor?
Beg your pardon?
You still have the floor.
Go ahead, okay? Liddell Lewis.
Thank you.
You sit there and you tell people how they need behave and do this. You know, you talked about Dennis the brother Don. Well, that's kind of funny, honey, because I remember your friend who's a mason out of Texas who liked to sit there and post my picture when I went through St. Louis with breast cancer back in 2020, okay? And then he also tell me how I'm a devil and all that. That's your friend. And I'm really seeing how he was supporting people. I mean, they, they... Where did y'all get your minds from? I mean, seriously, it's y'all think alike. You go after people's kids. You go after people. You look, these two white men, this dude right here, P Q, whatever his DM name is, and then he got Matthew all the way back there, right? Doing what he was doing to Tony Murphy. Can I do that with Quincy Murphy? Can I sit there and call this like Don? And look, do whistles and all that? Because I'm guessing that's gonna be appropriate because you allow these two white men do this to a black woman. Okay? That's an issue. If y'all don't want to take accountability for your own actions, then what the hell are you on here for?
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?
Hello, everyone. I'm Kevin Matthews, retired social worker from the seventh ward. Some unethical council members are falsely promising free money for home repairs from ARPA funds. It's your money, they say. They use these promises of direct payments to attack political opponents and find they're blocking them. When that's due to the strict ARPA regulations the city must follow. Let's be clear about ARPA's purpose. ARPA is not about, is about extending a helping hand with proper oversight, not about playing political games. Promises of free money for home repairs may sound appealing, but they are false. The federal government explicitly does not provide free money for home repairs. We must see through these false promises, especially when they are used to tarnish the reputation of anyone...
Anyone else who wishes to address council?
Claire McClintock? A couple of issues. Number one, the previous speaker don't know what the hell he talking about. And we get tired of that old trope about free money. People want free money. The people that need the money are the people that built this city. They work at General Motors. They retire. They need home repairs. They need home rehabilitation. They're living on limited, we're living on limited incomes. And you all need to stop twisting things. Nobody hollered about free money when Ashley Capital came down here. I hate to keep eating that dead horse. Nobody was talking about free money when community first come down here. And that's just a lie that ARPA money cannot be used for home rehab and rehabilitation. We need to put a resolution and a motion on the floor to add $16 million for home repair and rehabilitation. So that tells you what you think about me. That tells you what you think about all of us, the city of Flint. That tells you what you think about the city of Flint. And you wonder why we can't get the chambers filled up because you guys so damn crooked that I don't want to come down here or there. That's what it is. You guys are crooked. And if you think that you doing something right, you're not. Because when you lay your head down at the end of the night, you have the guy that you gotta ask to.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all the speakers who spoke. To respond to Arpa's puffball comment, the difference between when I was on this side and on the Republican side and being a community activist. And you go back and do your researches. I know you got video clips and all of that. When I was out there being a community activist, you never heard me tell an elected official that I was a ass. Excuse my language changing. Since I've been up here, I have been threatening on that. So that's the difference. On the young man that talks about the home repairs and Claire McClintock that spoke on Ashley Capital, you keep breaking up here talking about Ashley Capital. Ashley Capital is investing $300 million on the old building site, the North End, on the third, and the third ward, which is my ward that has been down for over, close to 30 years, if not more. Councilman Quincy Murphy support Ashley Capital in the development. So when you come up here and speak and all your respect, you know I ain't got nothing to love for you. I don't regret supporting Ashley Capital and the work that they, and the money that they invested.
I'd like to say, when we look at our council, it's very good with the personalities. You have the chair here who, y'all can hear her. She's calling you a little rat, a devil, a demon. And all this contritrayal she has is jealous, angle around a bit. Just not true. I'm going through these sad analysis boards about, we don't have ARPA funds. ARPA does not exist. It's switched to the General Fund. This is a tactic, in my opinion, to trick the department treasure because we had God on us.
And so I want to also address this too. It's kind of funny that individuals that's calling me a crook and saying that I'm not right.
You aren't right.
That we were...
You are a crook.
But that's part of the disloyalness that we talk about. You should not be allowed. And that's when you put it on, it's against yourself to get removed. So we just need to turn the table to be in order. I'm going back to my point. So we must be very, very, we must be very careful when we begin to talk about we a crook and when we start talking about who's charged with what because that's serious.
But you didn't discuss this to one of them?
She got all that, I'm a fool, snap your word.
That is enough. Please continue.
Okay, thank you, but that was improper point of order.
I, I, I got what I was saying.
Yeah, but at the end and the beginning of the day, this is documented. If I have anything to leave, please put it forth.
What was your point?
We have audience members shopping from the way back.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was like, where, ma'am? Would you all please make sure that you not yell up here? Thank you. Continue.
Thank you, but as I wrap up, when someone's calling you a crook, you must make sure that they're not a felon themselves. So I do encourage people to let's clean up their house before you come here.
Is there anywhere else that wishes to address the public? Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
I'm gonna take my time. I want to thank everyone for showing up, including my colleague in the sixth ward who showed up and decided to bring professional arguments to a quiet meeting. We appreciate you.
I want to also talk to someone who's...
Yeah, but I want to just ask this question. What has my colleague in the sixth ward built beside a platform hanging in the lice? Last time I checked, no neighborhood association, no convention, no...
What was your point?
President he begins with decorum because I'm gonna get out or leave himself in here.
That's a fair point. The president is late. Continue.
I'm bad. I have some associations at home.
Okay, okay, so the ladies, the ladies in here, she's out on the ground back four. And so, on here, audience, please. And so, if we want to talk about, again, I want to go on because when you keep hearing these lies all four three months ago, so as you stated, I got six neighborhoods up in my ward. How many have you started? What are you doing?
If she now says that she is...
Excuse me, one second, one second. Councilwoman Lewis, Ms. Barnes has the floor. She did a request for information.
Are you now saying you are on the side of this part that you started? Did you contradict yourself, liar?
Ms. Barnes, please give us some of your request information.
She can't have nothing trying to nitpick at something to start chaos. This is where our colleague in the sixth ward went to a downtown community with a colleague that she's arguing with. I was just waiting for the next week because I knew it was gonna get messy and this is what she does.
Request information. I want you to add my community. What are you talking about?
Talking about...
Okay, no, that was an improper request. Please wrap up your time.
Thank you. So after I wrap up my time, let's stick to the facts and not the gaslighting that will move the community forward. And I'm proud to vote for the first ward and asking of our first ward colleague who wouldn't vote for him in the first place and who wouldn't move it to council. Let's get the work done in the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in the second and final round?
So Mr. Matthews said that I wasn't black, that my colleague was talking. And he sits back and laugh.
If I personally insist about something, then I would expect them to support this resolution because they may be paying for the...
Request information.
What's your question?
Thank you. Did the councilwoman not work to take a picture and post it to the media of this council meeting?
I should do it.
I have, I have, that's enough. I'm having a legal meeting with the city attorney. And he was asking her to stop and let him...
I have a request. Councilwoman Barnes, this is an improper request. Councilwoman, please proceed. And maybe the parliament, do you know you couldn't ask that for you, Ms. Barnes?
I mean, I will proceed, but I also will say this too. She's the one that brought, people got their night. Okay, listen, you're right.
Please stop coloring out audience. Thank you. Okay, that's your first warning, Miss in the Michigan hat. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do your job.
Okay, and now I'm gonna tell you.
What?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Get Eve over there, Sam, put her up.
So anyhow, the fact of the matter is, all right, there is a motion on the floor to walk on number six, resolution admitting the contract with Priority Waste Company to honor Martin Luther King Day as a holiday to government offices. There's that. Is there a second? Okay, so we moved it properly. So, it is their discussion. Councilmember?
Thank you. It's unfortunate that you guys who want to move this back to government offices when y'all heard the residents come to speak and talk about how their garbage company worked on the Martin Luther King Day and y'all want to vote to support or amend this to its calendar which I promote on everything else. And I want to honor this to government. This is simple fit for y'all to submit it of a party. The God child, if y'all been, they been honoring other holidays, why they can't honor Martin Luther King Day and for some of y'all not to even want to support even sending this to council? It's a smacking face to the community that y'all heard. Speaker as the speaker that told y'all how dare the garbage company be picking up garbage on the Martin Luther King Day that, a holiday that everybody else is honoring. And this the first year, and what's so hard about sending them a letter, asking them if you honor the city of Flint? And when everybody else is shut down, can you shut down the garbage company for one day when y'all want to talk about this? What's to talk about?
Councilmember Piper?
So, Mr. Murphy, I absolutely do support having that as a holiday. I think that every, every holiday that the city hall is shut down, our contractors should do the same. But this is not ready for contract. We're asking them to amend the contract. We're asking them to amend the contract. There's dollars that we need to know and to review and whether or not they want to do it. Is there, that's what you, that's what happens when you hire an outside contractor. Nobody wanted to look at regular in-house. Nobody wanted to look at regular in-house. So we're not going to make rules for a private contract. But I absolutely do support it. But to put it out there now and to force it down their throats, I think that if we're gonna talk about and discuss it, Priority Waste should be here, and we should know the financial implications because now we're forcing them to pay for their day off of our pocket. The financial implication that we need to disclose. So it absolutely needs to be discussed. And we have a year before the next one to get it right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Wonderful. Thank you, Councilmember. Second round.
So, I mean, it is unfortunate our colleague left behind this. The deal is that we stop yelling out, and then after we stop yelling out, this is, this is, this requires more discussion instead of just a simple pass to council. Because we're looking at a few things here. For one, we had some residents come here complaining, say they want to pass out. We had a few residents express that they should not pick up trash, understanding here. But I also have residents telling me that they want their trash picked up. That they, that they want their trash picked up. So that's one thing. And then we also, the question is this, is this between them and their union? Is this between them and their union? Will this be a paid day off at the city's expense? Or will this be an unpaid day off at the workers' expense?
And so I do support doing that. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment? This is today. Anybody else? All right, so this is to shame residents to walk on number six to the wish of the community contract with Priority Waste Company to honor Martin Luther King Day as a holiday to government offices. Walk on back and forth. Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes with the matter? Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Piper?
Yes.
Ms. Worthing?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
The vote is five yes and zero no. The vote is five yes and zero no. This resolution has been sent to government offices.
Well, I mean, Worthing and Quincy Murphy love, uh, uh, what's her name? Liddell. She basically said Quincy is too emotional. Yeah, yeah, she said he's too emotional.
You don't want to knock.
That shit was screaming, boy. They were, they were like, Ben, they like, it's actually hard to heal, heal in trouble. I'm gonna, I'm gonna say nothing, man. Y'all had to see, oh, here it is, here it is. Check it out. Y'all, y'all had to see. Oh, here it is, here it is. Check it out.